Everybody to this, what's the date today? November 20th, 2023. Here at the Senior Community Center. Mrs. Yell, could you take the roll, please?
Adrian.
I am here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Bruce Menon.
Here.
Steve Cole.
Here.
Brianna Biggins.
Here.
Julieette Walker.
Present.
Ryan Callahan.
Here.
Great. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. I'll now turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
Thank you. Do we have anyone present for public comment? Okay. In that case, we'll move right along to our student and staff recognitions.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. And as we do in the beginning of every meeting, we have an opportunity to highlight some extraordinary students and staff throughout the Newburyport Public Schools. So tonight, our first student recognition is going to go to G. Joe Welch Malkowski. Is a ninth grade student at Newburyport High School and has already made a huge impact on the school community. G. Joe is a lead in the play The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, which just opened last Thursday evening. G. Joe had a significant impact on the Theater Arts Program while attending the Knoc Middle School. And now, as just a freshman, G. Joe has carried their strong stage presence to the Newburyport High School. Congratulations to G. Joe for all of your hard work, dedication, and to the Newburyport High School Theater Arts Program. You're an amazing student. Thank you.
We're going to test your stage presence right now. Congratulations.
I didn't know.
And you sit right in the middle. You hold this. This has to stay on for one month on the fridge. Awesome. Great job. Great job.
Awesome job. And continue the theme of performing arts. We're very excited to recognize one of our staff members here. And some of the great actors I will read coming up that she taught. And G. Joe might be in a movie someday. He can invite us to the Red Carpet. All right. Our staff recognition is Ms. Lisa Zalinski, who's been teaching in the Newburyport High School for 21 years. Since I've been here, and many of our colleagues know, that she goes above and beyond for her students in her drama and speech classes. She's especially adept to making genuine connections with students and having them engage in the real world activities for the classes that she teaches. For example, this year in our public speaking classes, students read children's books to the Brezina and First Graders to practice their speaking clearly and engaging audience. Recently, she's developed a unit where the students have developed a TED Talk using new technologies. The students are also filmed. In all of these projects, students have a choice, which increases their motivation. Lisa's helped students develop skills they will use in life: their ability to speak clearly, to communicate, to understand the needs of an audience, and to use anxiety to their advantage. Lisa's true passion is for her drama students. Her award-winning productions have shown, been shown across the country. You may have seen some of her former students in major motion picture, television series, or on Broadway, and national tours. Joe Carey, Stranger Things and The Fall Guy, of course, immediately comes to our minds. But there's also Paul's Syndrome, The Judge, Nicola Rossi, Lauren Order SVU, and Jordan Dunpilts Rent National Tour. And there's many other Newburyport students that are involved in theater throughout the country. Recently, she took the lead in facilitating a joint venture with the Knoc Middle School. Forty students from grades six through eight read the novel The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night. Lisa and Stephanie Phillips facilitated an acting workshop with seventh and eighth grade students, and she chaperoned a group of acting students who returned to the Knoc to teach the seventh and eighth grade students, graders, how to act out a scene. Her students also engaged in the middle school students in the high-level conversations about why certain choices were made by the author and the playwright. Finally, the whole seventh and eighth grade attended the play on Friday. This is a great example of interdisciplinary and multi-age teaching. I am pleased to invite Lisa up here this evening and thank her for her commitment to the Newburyport and her work in creating a culture that values curiosity, creativity, and the arts. Congratulations.
A little photo of her, part of your teaching evidence?
Good job, G.
Awesome job. Did you want to?
Sure.
Yes, we'll now take a brief recess.
All right. Take a quick little break.
Okay. I think we're all set to jump back in. Yes, everyone's here. So on the consent agenda, Mr. Callahan, you've got those warrants ready?
Oh, I've got them. Ready? I moved the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $679,814.23 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have one set of minutes from our last meeting on November 6th. Do we have any corrections?
Ms. Yell, I think I arrived at 7:16 PM.
What did she say?
And I thought it was 7:18 myself.
All right. We'll split the difference. Seventeen's fine.
Okay. I think we can get a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're ready to talk about the FY25 budget process. Look at that.
Best time of the year.
Most wonderful time of the year.
All right. Okay. First of all, I just, you know, once again, want to thank everybody in Central Office Team. I think the first piece we'll start with tonight is putting together fiscal budget assumptions and guidelines. This will really try to walk through, I think, only school committee, who is very familiar with school budgeting, of course, that's part of one of your roles, but also for other city officials and for parents and guardians and community members on how a school budget works. So basically, and this will accompany, I think, all of our presentations throughout, and we can also add to this if we get other questions, but I think we covered the majority aspects of budgeting. So we develop our priorities, FY25 priorities, direction of our administrators, guiding the staff, develop budget recommendations, looking at our vision, teaching, and learning. Obviously, the most valuable asset within our school operations is our people. And then operations itself, what we highlight. I think every year you go into a budget season, and there's some budget assumptions that you need to be aware of and also include prior to any type of budgeting work that you're going to do. The first one is the contractual obligations, honoring the NTA, the IA Instructional Units, and ASME Union, and then also non-union staff, obligating those contractual obligations. And at the same time, making sure we're following federal and state guidelines. And we added some of those different programs there. So I think part of a school budget is because we really focus on people, is throughout the school year, the system, we have to have the ability to be a little agile throughout the school year. So I highlighted some things that typically may happen during school year, especially with staffing and personnel. And then the budget reporting provides the routine updates or adjustments at school committee meetings. So this is one of our first, and I'll probably be up here seven or eight, and maybe 12 other times. And just highlighting and really talking about the iterations and the revision processes that will get us to our final number. Every year, we start off with our level service budget. So basically, for anyone that's watching, it's really taking our staffing patterns and the programs we have today, and then move them into next year. And then with the cost of inflation, the cost of programming, honoring the contractual obligations, where does that land us for increase? That's also one of our starting points. As you scroll through the document, you have expenditures and assumptions. So this is staff and programs. So really, I think what we've done well every year is we analyze our personnel, we analyze our staffing programs, and then this allows us to reallocate existing funds within the operational budget. When we do have a retiree, we try to ballpark that salary as a master's step five. And then the similar to our IA, we generally try to find a number in the middle so we can project what potential staffing savings or expenses are going to look like. So that's just a general aspect that we put into our operational budget. For example, some of those costs go up depending on the needs of the district, and some of those costs may go down depending on the needs of a district. But the first place we always start with all of the budget holders, the managers, including myself, is really looking at the needs of the district for next year, and then having the ability to reallocate or cost share at an even cost. Like, can we do things better with the funds that we already have? The second aspect is changes to programs and operations. So we take the same approach only for staffing, but we look at our programming needs. Let me just see if I can make that a little bit bigger. There you go. Programming needs throughout the district, organizational structures, expenses, and things of that nature. The other aspect that's really important is the legal mandates and accreditation. A lot of the legal mandates are typically unfunded. So we have to be a little creative, and that's sometimes why we'll reallocate staffing or reallocate programming to meet the needs of the students that we have in front of us. And then professional development. So there's been a focus on a lot of professional development and really focusing on instructional practices, the advancement of technology, and pedagogy, and things of that nature. Another big aspect of our budget is technology. So it's not only the technology upgrades for students in the classroom, but really technology upgrades throughout the district. So for example, you know, another unfunded mandate is 911 compliance and the upgrades of the 911 systems. So that will be something you'll see down the road in our operational budget, to upgrade the software at the high school so we can be 911 compliant. Another big item is curriculum instruction and assessment. So we've really invested in a lot of these programs that you're looking at for the next few years. And then also, we're looking at DESI with Open Science and Investigating History. So I think the Department of Education has also recognized a lot of districts are spending a lot of money on curriculum instruction and assessment tools. And now the state is kind of stepping in and assisting districts with that, with free versions of a lot of the curriculum, which ties directly to the state. So that's something down the road as we develop our budget that we will obviously consider. And then our just general instruction supplies. So every year, we anticipate, you know, a 3% increase generally, depends, you know, with inflation and the costs of everything, that might be a little bit more. But that's how we typically will budget that. I think as we're talking about this year, transportation costs. So I highlight what we're paying, you know, now with regular education and special ed requirements. As you all know, we're going out to bid for a new transportation contract. So that's something that we have to anticipate as we're preparing our budget. And then the same with our contractual obligations. So really looking at the salary projections for all staff. We have over 450 employees, and then moving them to the next step in column, or moving them to, you know, for some that may be retiring and all of that. So that's another aspect that we kind of go through. I'm going through this pretty quick because all the details, I don't want to read you guys all this. And then the other area that we expect costs to go up right now is utilities, electricity especially. Anticipate a 20% increase moving into next year. So that will be something that will be reflected in our budget as we begin our budgeting process. So then we have the mandated program expenses. So, you know, the L program, English Language Learners. There's also another unfunded mandate, and we do anticipate with more newcomers coming into Massachusetts that this cost will go up. We're very fortunate that Assistant Superintendent Ippolito wrote for the Afghan Refugee Grant that we got, which helped to fray some of these costs. But as we're moving into next year, the L program in anticipation of more newcomers coming in will also be reflective in our budget projections. And just we want to add some other areas, McKenney-Vento Homeless Education Program, just more references for the Ed Reform Act, and then also some DESI proportionate sheer cost services to students with disabilities. So these under mandated program expenses, as we start moving into our budget, we add this in as potential cost increases. And then revenue assumptions. So we anticipate, we got a bump last year in Chapter 70. We anticipate hopefully that will stay similar. Medicaid reimbursement, you know, that's the Medicaid work that we do for our students that have medical needs throughout the district. Special education circuit breaker, we anticipate that hopefully being funded once again at 75% over the threshold. And then school choice funds that we can anticipate. Also, other fees coming in, user fees for athletics, transportation, preschool, and building use rentals. We can anticipate those fees hopefully continue to come in. Our entitlement grants, and we did a lot of work on this, I think, last year, entitlement versus competitive. Entitlement grants, we budget, projected budget for those as we move into FY25. But Title I funds were lower this year, but we still anticipate, we still budget around $200,000 for those funds that come in. We haven't got those numbers from the state yet. And then our, as we said, competitive grants and foundation funds. So we'll write competitive grants that can assist us with defraying some of the costs within the operational budget. The Swayze Foundation is a, it's not a competitive grant, but it's an endowment that we can utilize for professional development from the Swayze family for many years. And then can't give enough credit to the Newburyport Ed Foundation, where they fund specialized programs and enhancement throughout the district. So they've been extremely supportive of the Newburyport Public Schools. The last piece is number eight, tuition-based programs. So early childhood tuition, we anticipate around $200,000. Our special education program development right now in that therapeutic program, we have one student who's tuitioned in at $65,000. But the North, just so you all know, the North Shore Superintendents were working together because of the OSD out-of-district placement went up 14% last year, and now it's projected to go an additional 4.69% for the upcoming year. So a lot of the superintendents talking about programming and could we cost share. For example, we're really happy with some of our language-based programming. We're also happy with some of our therapeutic programming at the high school. So do we have some programs that other districts, instead of doing the out-of-district placement, could send students to us at a lower cost? And then we could send some students to them. So we're working right now with other superintendents and really talking about what other districts have exemplary programs built within the schools. So that's something that superintendents are looking at because the costs of special education, tuition, along with transportation, is, it's, it's starting to become a breaking point for a lot of districts. So we're trying to actively pursue ways that we can help one another. And then, so in this packet, and it's also in the school committee packet, we just review the strategic plan, reminding people that this is what's driving our budget. And then we gave a timeline of the budget presentations, the work that we're going to do throughout the year. And then also down the bottom here, we've linked last year's budget link. So people who may not be familiar with the budget process can go back, look at our previous budget presentations and kind of get a, you know, overview or flavor of kind of how we're going to move forward. So we felt like this was just a nice way for people to kind of look at what drives our budget process. And then also, it allows people to, you know, reference and to click on different links and things like that. So we felt like this would be helpful throughout our budget process. And we'll share this, obviously, with City Council next week when we come back from the Thanksgiving break. And then I'm also just going to review just a quick little PowerPoint. It kind of highlights a lot of the, what we just outlined. So I can just go through this quickly. So once again, future-focused planning model, this is tied right back to our strategic plan. So what, the portrait of a graduate's the vision. So when you look for five or 10 years out, that vision's really not going to change much because it just really encapsulates exactly what we want our children to be able to do when they leave Newburyport Public Schools. The strategies, those are kind of like the different buckets on kind of how we're going to get there overall with the two to five years. And then remember the tactics here. This is the one to two-year goals that start from, from us at Central Office to the administrators, then to the teachers, and then to the students. So that's the ability for us to really work towards the different strategies on a yearly basis, with the ability to be flexible and to change. My little arrows come in right after. So that's exactly what I said, just in reverse. All right. The, so one, the visions portrait of a graduate. So this is that five to 10 years. So be, once I'm no longer here, and, you know, the next five to 10 years, you know, physically, we want our students, when they graduate, to be physically, socially, emotionally well, literate across all the disciplines, having the ability to be creative, innovative problem solvers. Because if you really think about this, we're preparing the students for jobs that have not even been in existence yet, especially with the advancement of AI, especially the advancement of technology. So our students need to have the ability to be agile, to be flexible, and be able to adapt to the real world that they're going to inherit. Civically engaged is also, was another big factor for us having, that's where that student voice comes in, students taking ownership, students being involved in the community, and then really prepared life after graduation, either in work or within the post-secondary college. Teaching and learning, the five objectives, so the bucket of teaching and learning, reimagining support so all students are able and ready to learn, reimagine the culture of self-discovery and personal achievement, organize design operations, and then the last strategy is become an active community of stakeholders. And then, as we said, this is prior, our district goals that have trickled down from, from us to Central Office, down to the teacher level. Increase our leadership expertise capacity within the district. We'll increase to improve our student achievement for all grades while closing the achievement gaps, at the same time stretching student learning. School improvement goal is the ability, we're in the second year of this, is to continue to use data, to make data-driven decisions, and also teacher-friendly data cycles. So people can understand the data that they're looking at and actually communicate with students and parents. And then district improvement goal, ensure a comprehensive, rigorous, equitable, relevant curriculum that's aligned to the frameworks. And then we've updated our district tactical matrix here. Some things we've accomplished from last year to this year, which was highlighted in last year's goal book that we passed out. But really, these, these are the tactical goals that are driving But really, these, these are the tactical goals that are driving the year's one and two plans, um, for, for the district. I won't read you through all of those, you, you'll have this. You'll see this probably a bunch of times, like twelve more times during budget presentations. And then as we get into the budget, so our budget, uh, right now, uh, seventy-three point six percent of all the costs are, uh, salaries, and we say that's the biggest investment is the, um, the people that are teaching our students and our staff. Fixed costs, sped non-salary, uh, buildings and grounds non-salary, and then remaining, um, the remaining costs. So that's pretty much, uh, the work that we do with that six point seven to achieve a lot of different goals. And then our sources of funds, we've all have seen this, uh, chart, so you have the city allocation, which is the biggest source of funds, uh, from the city. We've utilized choice tuition, um, and then I just, you can see where we utilize the choice, um, over the years. Other tuition, um, that's the in-district, that one student in the, in that, uh, program, and then our educatious, which is our foreign exchange program. Um, circuit breaker, which is the reimbursement, um, for special education. Athletic, this includes athletic user fees and also, um, donations, um, into the revolving account. Transportation, um, is, that's going to be a big cost for us, um, you know, this is the user fees we collect. Um, kindergarten, um, we've rolled that into our operational budget over the past few years. Uh, our preschool, Title I, IDA, and then the totals. And then we listed the other federal grants, this is a lot of the work, um, that the district has done. Um, so our early childhood, special education improvement, these are your title entitlement grants, Title II-A, Title IV, our enhanced health services, um, seventy-five thousand that goes, um, to Katie Vosiolis and the nursing department, and some of our, um, health curriculum. Uh, COVID, these won't be here next year, but our COVID relief, S R one, S R two, and S R three. So we just highlighted over here, we split that into two years. Um, so a lot of the work and the upgrades we've done, um, for the, uh, security cameras and the upgrades of technology is really coming out of the S R three funds. Uh, non-recurring grants, um, those would be the, for the ones that aren't coming back anymore, and then tech ed, remote learning. Um, so those are the totals of our grants. And then the private grants, once again, we mentioned this, how important Swayze family is and their donations for professional development, and then also the NEF, which just had a, a great fundraiser the other night, so we're very thankful for their efforts. All right. This is important, um, we get this question a lot, like a lot of the students are leaving Newburyport, and if you look at the trend data, it's really kind of, um, been within a hundred students, um, over the past few years anyways. Um, so this is our enrollment trends, um, from oh-nine. So school choice, this was always a topic, um, so school choice revenue, uh, is in the gray, expenses, um, is in the tan, and then the closing balance. So right around here, we did have a big, um, remember, this is COVID time and this, and so we did have a big balance, um, but we've been spending that down and trying to keep a healthy balance eventually of about five hundred to seven hundred, um, thousand So the school choice, so receiving and sending schools, um, so receiving tuition and sending tuition, and then we did a lot of work last year on school choice for the community. And this isn't teachers, this is receiving students and sending students, this is how, um, DESI categorizes FTE, um, so full-time equivalent. So you can see, um, we're receiving more than we're sending, and when we analyze this data, a lot of our elementary students, um, are choicing into a Salisbury Elementary, which is more of a traditional. So we'll have like twenty, I think twenty-something students right now, they like that model of a K to six model, and then typically those students will come back to us. And then low income and economically disadvantaged, so for the state, uh, for many years, uh, called it, um, those students categorized as low income, and then it switched to economically disadvantaged, and then they switched the, the name back to, uh, low income. But you can see, uh, the last few years, uh, that trend is, uh, moving upwards, so this is one demographic, um, that we take a look at. The other demographic is, uh, our L students, and so we broke this down to, uh, first language not English is in the tan and English language learner. Um, so you can see that this population is growing, and we anticipate that will grow with, uh, many of the newcomers coming into Massachusetts. And then demographics with students with disabilities. Um, so once again, um, you know, we're seeing a change, um, you know, over the years, so students with, uh, some more needs. And then last, this last piece really ties everything all together, so high needs is a total student population of the previous ones we just looked at, and you can see our high needs population, um, is growing. So a lot of questions, though, you'll hear, and then we've talked about this, I think, last year at school committee, um, if the enrollment hasn't changed much, then why are we, you know, adding, in some cases, more staff? Um, because we, we're meeting the needs of a different type of population of students, you know? Um, so the staffing that's going into our budget the last couple of years has been really support staff to meet the needs of a lot of our, uh, students and families. So it's not necessarily hiring a bunch of, of new teachers, it's, you know, the, um, the support of students that have, uh, different needs, you know, throughout the district. So the demographics of the, uh, student has changed in the last ten years. And then our special education costs, um, so we broke this down, so you have this, um, so the tuition, transportation over the years, personnel, non-personnel, and you can see, uh, the total jump, um, it went high because of the fourteen percent increase of the out-of-district placement, and then as we said, um, that's also going to, we have to anticipate a four point six nine increase for this year. And then what I just, so this is, um, what the out-of-district, um, tuition rates are, so we have, um, maybe one student in some of these, and we'll have multiple students in some of these different locations. And that's why the work of, I think, Debbo Connor and our special education staff, um, and really looking at developing, um, our own programs, uh, within district is number one, better for families to stay in the Newburyport Public Schools, we feel, uh, and then also two, um, to save some, uh, savings down the line. And that's why a lot of work has gone into, uh, Ian Larson of Landmark, working with our teachers over the past, uh, few years, and really developing the language-based programming district-wide, um, for students that need reading support, and then also our therapeutic, uh, programming at the high school. So this is just some, um, prices that, um, you know, we're looking at. And when we look at this also, these costs, um, will go up four point, um, six nine or whatever that cost is going to be. So we'll have, probably have a new, um, new chart there. And then last but not least, our budget timeline, um, and I think we've done a good job, uh, in the sense of, um, collectively, school committee and myself, um, for really keeping our budget on the agenda items, uh, throughout this school year, um, where we, you know, have different presentations, we give different updates, there'll be multiple iterations, uh, throughout the school year, and then we finally get to that public, um, presentation here in April that we'll have, we'll narrow it all down with our priorities and the costs and kind of, um, you know, we'll get it done. But, so we're right in the beginning. Um, next Tuesday, May, or is it Tuesday night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, we'll have our, uh, joint meeting with city council, uh, which will be the, and this is like the preview, it's like pregame right now, but we'll, we'll actually have some numbers, I think, from the city, um, which will be helpful for us as we begin our budget process. So that's collectively the budget update through the, uh, assumptions, uh, newsletter, uh, or information, and then just kind of a preview of some of the slides of what will be up and coming, so. And that's it.
Great. Mr. Callahan.
Thanks, Sean. Um, remember a couple of years ago, Phil and Ethan were saying they were trying to match up their data sets so that they actually looked the same? Do you know if that ever happened? Like, the city's version of the numbers was always off. Do you know if they ever made them the same?
I'm, I know they, they do talk a lot, right, Phil? You, yeah, you can answer that.
Come on up, Phil.
Some MUNIS thing? Is that the MUNIS thing?
Something about the, that version.
Oh, the MUNIS version. Yeah, you probably got to speak up here.
Why don't you go to the mic?
So the issue we had last year had to do with the school choice balance number as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and it really boils down to what question was being asked. The city's number is the cash balance, so that was actually what they had on hand in terms of the school choice balance. The number I reported was on an accrual basis, which means I had to account for uses of that money that hadn't been used yet as of June thirtieth, but I knew we were going to spend over the summer for the teachers' contracts. So that was the difference between those two numbers.
Okay.
Uh, we've worked very closely this year in terms of making sure that we are lining things up. Um, I've gotten, um, access to the city's version of MUNIS, so I can check things online now as well, so, um, you know, if you ask me what the balance is in school choice at the end, as of June thirtieth, I'm going to give you the accrual number because I know what I have to spend out of it, the city's going to give you the cash number.
Okay.
And so those two numbers will never be the same. By the time you get to the end of August, they will be, because they will have paid off the teachers over the summer. You know, it's, it's a teacher's contract because that flows September first through August thirtieth.
Okay, thanks.
I'll try to put another number in there just to confuse everybody for this year.
You better one guess it, Phil.
Thank you. Mr. Menon.
Yeah, I'm, I have asked the same question for every year, and this is my last opportunity to ask it. Um, it would be really great to be able to see the money that's being spent by the parent-teacher organizations in support of the schools, to just, because in, in my mind, even though that doesn't come out of our budget, it is still one of the, it's still the cost for operating the schools. So I, I've asked for that for every year, for twenty-two years.
Well, you're in luck.
I'd love to see it. We've got it?
Luck, because by March we'll have had all the total information from all those.
So I, so I, after I step off in January, you guys will have it.
Yeah.
Great.
I mean, it's still good, it'd be like a.
Great, no, no, that's great, it's great.
We have, uh, I mean.
I mean, NEF is easy.
Yeah.
That's an easy one. Uh, PTO there, coming up in two meetings, I think, so hopefully we have a lot after that, but yeah.
That would be great. I just think it's, it's an important data piece for us.
I'll, um, I'll have some information by our next meeting for you. That way I don't have to buy a gift, so.
Okay, good. Good, that will be a gift. You can put it on a certificate, Sean can sign it. I'd love it.
It'll be on your fridge for at least a month.
At least a month. It'll be in my fridge, actually.
No, I, we've, I've, I've met with, um, PTO earlier, and they kind of gave me, they even gave me last year's breakdown of what they spent the money on. Um, so maybe that will, they'll be the beginning, I know, uh, Mr. Callahan and Ms. Walker are heading up the fundraising, um, subcommittee, but at least it will give a general idea of the money they brought in and, and what they, they spent on it.
The PTO in particular, I remember when I first came on, I asked why they weren't in that list with, with Swayze and NEF, and the answer from, uh, somebody who's no longer on the school committee was, well, we just, or it might have been Susan Ficaro, said, well, we just presume they're going to give it to us. And I was like, well, that doesn't make any sense. Why would you do that, you know? But, um, you, because you, you consider it not part of operations.
Correct.
They're giving money to field trip buses, that kind of is operational.
I, I would say, um, it, it all depends, you can't really, like, um, anticipate that, so it's like the field trips that they support is above and beyond what we're supporting. Do you know what I mean? So it's really that idea of enhancement, so if, let's say we schedule two field trips and the PTO wants to fund four others, um, that's what, you know what I mean? That's kind of what we do.
I think it'd be good to have that as like an addendum.
Yeah.
Or something.
Yeah.
Just so people can see it.
Sure. That's part of that committee work, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Walker.
Okay, so, um, the, uh, slideshow was great, I guess that was a preview.
Yes.
So if, if we could get a copy, that would be great. Um, the, yeah, I guess just putting some context into the slides that you're presenting because fiscal years get confusing when they're listed with calendar years, and in the beginning you introduced the, um, I guess it was the tact, the strategies from the strategic plan and the tact, and the annual goals, right? That said fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. So that was sort of a review of the current year goals? Are you, when, when would you anticipating presenting the goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
We updated that matrix for this year, yep.
So I think just at the top, explain that twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four is the, I assume that's covering the calen, the school year?
School year, correct.
Okay, so that's.
So that, that information we handed out, that booklet, was like all of the accomplishments tied back to last year's.
Right, right, that was looking back.
So this is this year.
So looking forward, the ti, the, if that table in there is looking forward, it still says fiscal, it still says twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four on the top.
Okay.
So you know what I mean?
I do.
Like, I'm trying to understand how, so if those are.
So that would be like this.
You're trying to set the stage for the school committee and the city council, think about what you're anticipating to do in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, then showing the goals from twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four to me don't really make sense. I mean, unless you're just saying, here's what we've accomplished, or here's what our goals were from last.
Right, yeah, we can, we can fix that.
That's fine.
We can bring more clarity to that.
And maybe it's premature to present the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five goals. That's understandable, but just, if it's just a year-in-review kind of thing, if you could just make that clear, this is what we set out to accomplish in this budget that we accom, accompanied it to achieve those things, right?
Right.
Um, at some point, you're setting the stage for the upcoming year.
Correct.
So that's, that's where I just, if we can kind of be clear on that. Um, the, uh, I guess it's just some questions about, more and more about the budget process, knowing that we're going to have some big expenditures around transportation potentially. Um, I, you know, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the committee, this is up for, obviously, discussion. I per, my personal objective is not to rely on fees, so no increase in fees, and personally I would like us to see continually going down on fees every year, if we could. Um, so that applies to athletics and transportation, that's going to be my particular repeated mantra, but, um.
It's your ice cream.
It's not my ice cream, it has nothing to do with food, but.
Pop tears.
I understand the reference. Um, the, knowing that we're going to have a contract to be negotiating, that's going to impact our budget, when, when would we get an update on that? When, when will we know, when is the contract negotiated?
Next year. Next school year.
Next school year?
Yeah.
Okay, so not this school year?
Nope.
Okay, I, I misunderstood in your presentation.
Yeah, well, the contract obligation, so we have salary increases, step in columns that we get a, so that's part of that.
All right. So our budget.
So that's going to increase.
Our budget will be, have to anticipate what our contract will negotiate.
Yep, like we do every year.
Got it, okay.
Hmm.
Is there, it would be helpful to have a little bit more detail on what we anticipate that contract is likely to include, without putting us in a bad situation, but I, I just would like to have some, and maybe it's appropriate to have that discussion in finance subcommittee, I just would like a little more details on what we're anticipating, the big questions are going to be around that, because, yeah, I'm just concerned about anticipating too much of an increase without having more, more context.
We typically, as part of our joint meeting, you'll have that information, and typically salaries usually is around a three percent increase.
For transportation?
Oh, I thought you meant for contract.
Transportation.
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
You're talking about renegotiating the transportation contract.
Oh, I thought you were talking about, um, salaries.
No, I'm talking specifically about transportation. Because that's a big part.
That's going to be a big piece, so we'll, we'll estimate, um, kind of what, what that may be.
Yes, and I understand you're going to estimate, I'm just saying it's part of. I'm just saying, it's part of the budget process, it would be helpful to have a little more of a deeper dive into what your assumptions are around transportation. So if, Madam Vice Chair and Mayor, if there's an opportunity for that conversation to happen where we can get a little more detail on what exactly their assumptions are in the transportation, and if there's any opportunity for school committee input on, you know, just before February, right? So that we can, because if that's gonna be a big deal, I think it merits a little bit of a more concerted conversation.
Big, I would say, big budget assumptions is transportation contract. We anticipate that going up. Our support for our L families, you know, remember that we're having more families moving in. So we gotta anticipate increases in that area. And then also special education increases.
Okay. That's all fine, but you understand my question about transportation?
Yes.
Okay.
I was gonna, just jumping onto that. When will the process start of going out to bid for a new contract? When does that process begin?
I think we're gonna, Phil, we're going out in December, January?
Come on, all the way up. Thank you. I'm just thinking it would be great to get a.
Yeah, I know, we should just give them a special seat.
So Superintendent's right, we plan on issuing the RFP, going out to bid at the end of December 1st, week of January, get through the holidays, get that out there. That will mean that we should get it back, hopefully, and see what we're gonna award it to by beginning to mid-February. It also gives us enough time that if we don't get enough bids, or we don't like the bids that we get, we can go back out to bid and see if we get anything different. I do wanna clarify one thing, we don't get to negotiate. This is just based on, here's the bid. So if you look around, most communities have only been getting one bid on their bus contracts. So we'll have to see what happens with that.
Yeah, that was my question, so this is a lot quicker than.
Yeah, so I anticipate that we're gonna know what, we're gonna have real numbers for the bus contract before we finalize the budget.
Okay, that's really helpful. So I guess when you say we can't negotiate, are we assume, can we, are we making these same assumptions in terms of provision of services that we have in our current contract?
That is the starting point.
Okay.
That we would start with that.
Okay. Because we had talked about potentially looking at reducing potentially the number of buses, for example.
That's something I'll need to talk with the superintendent about, and then we'll get with the bus company and see what their thoughts are in terms of ridership levels where we are this year as well.
Okay.
And then we can go from there. But it will be, again, we'll be issuing the RFP no later than the first week of January. And usually give them about three weeks to turn it around, because for a lot of them, they do enough of them, it doesn't take that long to turn them around.
Okay. Yeah, I would just encourage staff, you know, and if you need a copy, we did, you know, to review some of our report back to the full committee last year about transportation costs and potential cost savings that we could consider to not push that additional burden on families. And one of them was, like I said, the, the school bus number. So I would just encourage you to refer to that in consideration of.
I'm always looking to see if we can save money on the bus contracts. It's a little difficult here because of the, the times that we have and everything else. So we'll get with the bus company and see what we can do with that.
Okay, I completely understand the situation you're in, I have no doubt you're negotiating the best costs. I'm just advocating for us to, as a school committee, we provided some guidelines last, last year. I'd like that document to be considered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So perhaps there could be a presentation at an early stage in this process?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That we're, we're in the loop? What's going out, what's coming in?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. I had a question about Title I. Just looking at the revenue assumptions page. Is there an explanation for why actual is quite a bit lower than budgeted? Because historically, when you showed those numbers, they were higher the past few years.
It's the demographics at that, at that grade level. So we didn't have as many students that qualified for Title I.
Even though we seem to have increasing needs, it's just.
Elsewhere.
This specific.
Correct.
Cohort, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Were there, were there other questions?
Just one.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Cole.
Thank you. So with respect to professional development, first, I want to just say that you've done a really nice job since you've come on as superintendent in bringing in folks that you know that have knowledge and expertise. And I know you mentioned that our current PD is supported by grant foundation funds as well as the operational budget. Have you thought about pegging, if you will, a number from the operational budget to professional development so that we can ensure that we're gonna be able to sustain skills, knowledge, and competencies to adjust the regulations and other instructional practices?
Yeah, the, the Swayze Foundation's been significant, especially for the teacher professional development. The other professional development that we budget for is for like administrators, nurses, and things like that. So we do have, we allocate professional development for certain personnel. And then the Swayze account just takes care of, you know, the teachers' professional development.
So you kinda start with, if you will, an operational number, and then fill in what you can with Swayze?
Depending on what we're, like, what we're trying to do. Like, a lot of the technology, professional development that we offer teachers, the Swayze funds were very helpful for that. But we definitely look at both.
Yeah, I mean, I was just encouraged that to continue so that you can sustain, again, the skills, knowledge, and competencies that teachers need.
Hundred percent, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Higgins?
I have two questions for you, and you might not be able, well, I think I should start with, I'm not coming in with an agenda on these questions, but I think they're important questions to ask and potentially include into these presentations and coming up. So the first one is, you start with assuming a level service budget, assuming the same level of staff and programs, but particularly for the last few years, that would also assume that we have the same level of ESSR funds and the same level of need for students given the pandemic. And since we are a few years out from the pandemic now, I just wanna question that assumption, and like, does that still hold true, right? So like, does a level service in 2022 the same as a level service in 24 or 25, right? Like, I just feel like if it, if it is, like, maybe you can talk about that or present some evidence as to why that is. But I think it's just a valid question to say, is a level service actually needed? Or we should be comparing level service to 2019, for example? And then the second question is, what, I know this is relatively new endeavor for the district, but what evidence do you have that the additional sped, special ed programming investments is keeping more students out of, out of service districts? Like, do you actually have evidence or numbers that fewer students are moving out?
Yeah, like, for example, the, for two years now, we have no, no additional students have gone to Landmark.
Okay.
So that's been two years that we've worked with Ian Larson's to develop a landmark type of program in district. So that's, that would be one, just off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we can provide, I understand what you're saying, so we can provide some of that evidence of the in-district programming and what it would, what the cost would have been without it.
Ms. Walker?
Yeah, just one follow-up on the timeline. Where do we talk about the capital needs?
That usually comes in during our preliminary budget. So when we do our preliminary, then Steve usually does his that same night.
I'm not seeing where that preliminary budget.
March.
In March? That's.
No, typically, I think we do that in January or February, like, the overall piece.
Okay.
Usually have first budget presentation.
Yeah, I would just ask if there are going to be some, it might be helpful to give us the opportunity to come and see some of the capital, proposed capital improvements. So if that opportunity could be divided in advance of when your presentation.
Yeah, we could do a separate, instead of putting them back to back, we could do a capital improvement separate presentation.
You can just give us a heads up of when that capital plan, then if there's opportunity to come and look at those improvements in the schools.
Yeah.
I think that just having the context of where those intended improvements are targeted, that would be, for me personally, that'd be very helpful, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So understanding where that is in the timeframe would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Next meeting, we're hopefully getting a presentation on the integrated arts space.
The feasibility study, we'll have the architects come in and do a full presentation. There's one.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys, thanks for your feedback.
Okay, Ms. Walker, we'd love to hear about your experience at the MASC conference.
Hey.
And thank you for your attendance.
Sure, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a great conference. I would love to see more people from the school committee attend. It really is an opportunity to, not just the delegate assembly, which is just like a tiny little sliver of it, you know, the multiple day agenda has a lot of very interesting and helpful seminars and workshops and speakers. So I would say particularly our newer school committee members who are coming, starting, there can be an effort to try to go through a day or two. I get, I've gone two years now in a row, and I get a lot out of it. And, you know, we, the costs are covered by our, our schools, so it makes it even greater, a no-brainer to me to go, because it is a lot of benefit. We, we should get notified, I think, in the, in the summer. So if we could get an earlier heads up on when the conference is, I think you guys get sent materials. And it would be great if that could be shared with the school committee.
Get the word out.
Earlier in the year, because I think we always are kinda scrambling for who the delegate's gonna be and all that kind of stuff. So that's my little plug. I mean, the highlights broadly were, you know, that, you know, there's always an effort to sort of keep folks up to date on what the current state of the practice is, you know, even though school committee members aren't necessarily teaching in the schools, there's definitely a number of opportunities to get up to speed on, you know, just what, what, what teaching tools there are and what, what current challenge there are, as well as, you know, some, some new opportunities and things. I think, then there's also just some basic guidance on, you know, for example, navigating polarizing issues at school committee meetings and some practical guidance. There were some very good presentations from the keynote speakers at different, at different events. There was, the, the closing session was on, or that I attended, was on AI and what we should be thinking about in terms of AI in the schools. I found that to be very useful. Yeah, I could go, there's, there's equity, there's a lot of equity learning. And I went to a presentation on, well, on the equity piece, how to, you know, be, continuing to be more equitable in our schools. But I also went into a session on adopting standardized goals and for our sports programs, which is a state, is a effort being led by our statewide athletic association. But I think it's really important, you know, addressing some of the, both the inequities and also promoting good sportsmanship. And I think it's certainly something we already do in, in the Newburyport schools, but I think it would be great to have a sort of a standardized statewide way to, to measure up to those standards. Anyway, lots of great things. Got to be at Bruce's award presentation as well, which was really nice. The delegate assembly results, so as you know, we voted at the last, last, before the, before the conference, we voted on how we wanted as a school committee to take action on different things. And now I just lost my answer there. The short summary is that the delegate assembly, out of eight resolutions, only one was voted on to move forward. So it was Resolution Number Two, and it passed, which was regarding investigations and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures. That was also the only one that was not debated. Every single other resolution was held out for discussion and debating. The, I can get into, like, I won't, I will spare you the details, but there was an amendment proposed for almost every single resolution that was considered. The, all the other resolutions, though, ultimately were tabled for further consideration. So that included full-stable funding for Metco, regional transportation, including diversity, equity, and inclusion in our position in, or, or committee, there was a lot of debate about that. Resolution related to the Mass School Building Authority funding, resolution related to School Bus Stop Arm Surveillance Act and Enforcement, MCAS, and safe storage of firearms. We could not reach agreement on any of those.
Couldn't reach agreement on safe storage of firearms?
Well, again, you know, what I would say to, to all of those resolutions, I think there probably was a lot of agreement in, among the delegate assembly about the overall, the primary intention. It was the details that people just could not get their head around. And I think it speaks to, you know, if you're gonna present something that you know is a pretty controversial topic, be very deliberate in what you're including in that resolution. And I think some of our discussion beforehand noted some of our concerns, right? And those concerns became quite significant when, and then people just got tired. So I, I'm, I'm happy to be the representative. I think next year would be great if another person would like to do that with some advanced notice and planning. But yeah, highly recommend the conference, I'll probably try to go again next year. Get a lot out of it and continue to get a lot out of it, so. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to subcommittee updates, starting with finance.
We met last week, and it was a shorter version of Superintendent's budget. Introductory report, and that's really about what it was about.
Great.
Very short.
We'll hear from you more in a little bit, right, after policy?
Sure.
So on the policy subcommittee, we have the proposed changes to policy, Section I. So we're continuing our audit of the policies with our MASC folks. And last time we were together, we did a first read. We did it a little bit quick because we had a long agenda. I'll try to not be so rushed this time, and, but I will try to focus on the key ones. So this is Section I. Instruction, Section I instruction. So first, Ida, the first one in front of you guys for approval is the school year slash calendar. Should I, I can't remember how we did this last time. Should I just present all of them, and then if there's any that we wanna table or put aside, and then we can vote on them as a, as a section, as an entirety?
I think we just pulled out anything we wanted to discuss, right? And then.
That's how I remember it.
Yeah.
Okay, so Section ICA, just, it's a coding update only. So it's school year calendar, just changing IC to ICA. IE, organization of instruction, we are proposing to remove it entirely as it was previously removed from the MASC reference manual. And it's having, is addressed in subsequent regulations, not necessary. IGA, IGB is curriculum development and adoption, and there's some revisions noted in bold. Also, the naming is changed to add development and adoption, so not just curriculum adoption. And there's some, as I mentioned, just changing the first paragraph, not really changing the overall content and intent, but just adding some clarification and, as well as a legal reference. I would also note that we did previously update this policy in March of 2023 to remove the reference to the curriculum committee, and that, those changes are already in here. IGB is student services programs. We just had some very minor wording and cross-reference updates. IHA, also a proposed removal of this policy. Again, MASC doesn't have this in their reference manual. They feel like it's covered in other related policies.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm looking at, back at IGB.
Yep.
Shouldn't that say, should that say Director of Pupil Services? Like, what is Director of Public Services?
It should say pupil services.
Okay.
It's Wayne Amor Alstom.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarah, for catching that.
Sorry, I was just staring at that and trying to think about what that was.
Yep.
So, okay. Proceed.
That was the intention there. That was the intention there. On I H A I, also same thing. As I discussed previously, occupational education has been deleted from the M A S C reference manual. So that would be a removal, rescinding of that policy. I H A M A is parental notification relative to sex education. So we just added slight wording changes there and a legal reference, otherwise it matches the M A S C version. I H A M B, we had removed some of the additional verbal screaming language, I think right in the middle there where you see the crossed out language, as that's covered in a different policy. I H B A, program for students with disabilities, just a wording change. I H B D, compulsory education, title one, just a cross-reference update. I H B E A, we recommend replacing it with the M A S C version just to, to make sure that we're in compliance with, you know, state guidelines on this front. So you'll see the new M A S C version in your packet as well as the crossed out version that we're proposing to delete. I H B F, homebound instruction, just some wording updates to match the M A S C version. And the director of pupil services corrected that one. Public services. Okay, I H B G dash R is homeschooling. We did not, again, this was unique to Newburyport, and so we were proposing to remove it as there is no equivalent in the M A S C version. Based on our discussion with staff, we felt that was okay. I H B H, alternative school programs, just removing, changing the first paragraph of the Newburyport version to match the M A S C version. I J, instruction materials, we added some additional bullets. So, and then, and again, made these match the M A S C version and eliminated some of the other language. Cross-references and legal updates, no, just cross-reference updates. I J R, review of instructional materials, updated the wording. Minor, minor updates there. I J L, library material selection and adoption, just added additional reference, otherwise we were consistent. I J O A, field trips, just some fine tuning of the language and a cross-reference. I J O B, community resource persons slash speakers, just a cross-reference update. I J O C, I J O C, school volunteers, cross-reference. I K A B, student progress reports, coding was updated from I K and then just additional language referencing guardians. I K F, graduation requirements was just a coding update from I K. I M A, teaching activities slash presentations, also similar to other reference actions. We propose removing that because it's no longer in the M A S C version. And then I M B, teaching about controversial issues slash controversial speakers, cross-reference only. Any questions about anything we covered tonight? All right, so I will propose a motion, I guess I can move the motion, with the update to the public services to, for I G B to say pupil services, to move to adopt the revisions as proposed, as presented, sorry.
Second.
Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And we are waking our way through J.
Okay.
We should wrap up K and L as well, and then we'll be done by the end of the year. That's our goal. At least with our review with M A S C, we might have some internal conversations still to happen at the policy committee. And then I would just say that because the webpage is in the process of getting updated, I would just encourage school committee members to remember that the policies are not up to date on the website right now. We have A, we have A through C currently posted as a PDF on the policy webpage. But the links within the, the searchable database are probably not correct. We're going to work on getting other policies posted in a PDF format and then hopefully with the staff's help, we can, we can remove all the other policies that are on there. And I know the staff is working on getting everything updated, but if, when in doubt, reach out to me and I'll make sure you have an updated version of the policy.
Thank you.
And then maybe we can make sure the new school committee members get a copy as well.
Perfect. So at our next meeting, can we anticipate a first read on J or?
When is our, how long before our next meeting, December?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
It's December fourth, I think.
We voted on those.
I can follow up with you.
Yeah, I'll get back to you.
Okay, but maybe at least one?
Yeah.
One section for a first read?
Hopefully, I'll let you know.
Great. Okay, Mr. Callahan, can you give us a little update on the fundraising advisory committee?
I can't. We've not met since the last time, but Juliette and I have met. And we decided what I brought up at our last school committee meeting, that we're going to split the remainder of the meetings into one group per meeting. So the next one is going to be the all-sports boosters, and that's on the 27th, the Monday after Thanksgiving. And Juliette wrote up during our meeting a series of agenda items that will go for each of them.
Yes.
I allowed her to do the writing because I have terrible penmanship. So that'll be all set. I guess if everybody wants, I can send out a simple agenda email so everybody is just aware for, before Monday happens. Like, is what we're talking about with the all-sports boosters people? Mr. Cole and I were talking at the finance subcommittee, which I guess I didn't bring up in that report, but we've still not heard back from.
Gridiron.
The gridiron people, which is just unfortunate. Two form submissions, emails, text messages, nothing. And I kind of have the feeling that they're the largest contributor to extra money.
But you can always slot them in at some point if you do make that contact, right?
Yeah, 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 there's a day open because there's.
Okay.
But that's it.
Great, thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
All right. So just a quick update on just some different activities. I, first piece is the school-based budget workshops that we ran. Think overall, I appreciate all the school committee support. I think, I think everyone was at at least one or two or even three of them. Although we didn't have a lot of parent and guardian participation, it was still a good opportunity for us to fine-tune our process because we're going to continue to utilize that with faculty along with the school councils too, to get their feedback. But the parents and guardians who did participate, if you're watching, we want to thank you. We got a lot of positive feedback from them. It said it was a overall, they appreciated the opportunity and overall it was positive, you know, positive meetings where they got to give us their opinions on different budgeting aspects. So I think it was a, a great attempt the first time, and I think next year we can probably even fine-tune it a little bit more. And then just as we go through our budget processes, I, you know, talked about the, as we always look at our budgeting process, the first aspect is the reallocations or cost-neutral additions. It's really important for us. And then the breakdown of their line items. The facilities repair aspect is part of every budget holder. So Steve has the big picture, but I have our principals and administrators, you know, give us information if there's things that need to be addressed. And then ultimately, any new programming that's going to cost or new staff is like another aspect of our budget process. But enough for the budget for tonight. We'll have a lot of opportunities to go through all of it. Some great performances. I had the opportunity to go to the NOK recital along with assistant superintendent at Belito. It was awesome. I tell you, Kathy Shepherd and Mr. Nickerson, they just do amazing work at the NOK. And so this was an opportunity for students to perform, to sing, dance. We even had staff perform with students, which was pretty neat. No one asked me to play. I'm pretty good at the triangle. Maybe next year. One thing that I thought was just amazing for the entire district was our Veteran Day ceremonies all the way from the Brezlin hand up, very powerful day, meaning of, you know, what America is and freedom and having the opportunity for our students to talk to veterans. So throughout the district, our, at the high school, Red Cross Club organized a Veterans Day Assembly where they able, the veterans are able to address the students. And you could hear a pin drop. There was a whole high school was, was in there. The students very attentive. It was a very powerful message and gave the, those American heroes a standing ovation. And then also at the, and she's here as a union rep, but Ms. Grosskin, follow her hard work. She organized an annual program for eighth grade civic students where veterans meet with the students in small groups and discuss how and why they choose, chose to serve in the armed forces. The Mullen held their Veterans Day Assembly where student readers shared background on the day. And they got to read stories. And the Brezlin students wrote letters and thank you and held a short assembly to the veterans throughout. So it was just a great, I think, day for the entire district and really for all of us to reflect and take a step back of the freedoms that, that we do have. And I just want to thank the veterans that participated throughout the day. We're very appreciative. I'm skipping through like the important stuff here. Our school committee, just the update, and we plan on doing more of a presentation at our next school committee on the director of pupil services search. So far, we've, they, we've held three focus groups. On November 15th, we did it in one day. So we had parents and guardians focus group, administrators focus group, and then the faculty and support staff focus group. In addition, for the past few weeks, we've had a survey that will remain open until Wednesday. As of today, we've had over 100 responses to that survey, both parents and staff. And then the final stages of creating that screening committee, we'll have an updated, our next process on who the members are, and we'll have a little bit more detail. But that process is well underway, and we're really pleased with the work that NESTEC is doing to assist this.
Can I just ask what the parent turnout was like at that focus, Karu?
I think they had a pretty good number of parents.
Better than our budget workshops?
Better than the budget workshops, yes.
Take offense.
Yes. Better than the budget.
All right, well, that's saying something.
I mean, at that meeting, I can give you exact numbers.
Okay.
It was, according to NESTEC, it was a good amount of parents that, that came to attend the focus group. The other piece is the survey. They also said the participation of the survey is, at this time, having well over 100 people is pretty good.
That sounds, that sounds great, yeah.
All right, that's that update. And I think the last piece is just the activities going on for Thanksgiving week. And I think this is also a time for all of us. We're going to have a lot of, it's a short week and there's a lot of tradition here. But also, I think, all of us take a step back and reflect on different things we can be thankful for. So for some of the activities, so tomorrow, there's a rotary luncheon, the mayor just reminded me, in Amesbury. No, I knew about that one. This is where both the rotary clubs get together from Amesbury, Newburyport. It's a long tradition. It's close to 100 years now where these groups get together. So the cheerleaders for both squads, the football captains, the coaches, the athletic directors, community members, like the mayor from both towns kind of get together and have a nice little luncheon tomorrow. This also is going to kick off spirit week for all of our schools. And then on Wednesday will be the color day. The NOK, actually, and then tomorrow night, there's a dessert auction at 7:00 PM for NHS. Mr. Callahan didn't approve the, the fundraising.
It's all the sweets.
I just want to mention that. So that's a dessert auction. And then NOK eighth grade, they're having a, this is something interesting, a goofball fashion shop dress up. So the students are going to dress up as a Thanksgiving Day meal. Is that one of your other inventions? All right, good job, Ms. Grosskin. I know a few goofballs that could judge, yes.
Why is everybody looking at me?
And then last but not least, just the Amesbury Community Television is going to livestream the broadcast game, Thanksgiving Day game on their channel, and then we're on our channel too. And then just a recognition of Richie Eaton, the hometown legend. He's doing his final Newburyport High School sports commentary at the Thanksgiving with Frank Grusak, who they've been doing that, I guess, their commentary for many, many years. Yeah, so Mr. Eaton, this will be his last commentary. And that's all I have for Thanksgiving activities for the week.
Thank you. All right, on to new business.
Can I go first? Thank you.
You're the mayor.
That's right, what am I asking? So yes, I wanted to just say, 100th meeting of Newburyport and Amesbury this year, which is pretty cool. They've actually met 108 times, but the first, first nine were unsanctioned, so this is the official.
Unsanctioned?
Unsanctioned. And that was from like 18 something to like 1908.
This is, you're talking about the, the football, not the rotary club?
Not the rotary club. Not the rotary club. I'm talking about the football, just to be clear. It's the 100th. But the rotary clubs, who knows, if they were at that, that first 1915 game, if they were, if they had their thing going then, then they certainly were there then as well. Yep. Newburyport leads the series 52, 41, and 6, which is pretty cool. What else did I want to say? I wanted to say a couple of other things before we get to Mr. Callahan, because I think we're going to close on the same note. But we did have an election since we've last met, so I just wanted to congratulate Breonna Higgins. And the other two are in attendance, Annie Boger and Kathleen Shaw. They'll be joining us shortly. Congratulations. You all, all three of you, I thought did a really great job. N E F raised $153,000, I believe, at their auction the other night, which was really fun to attend. And they just seem to do it every year. It's unbelievable, and they just set a record each time. And I just want to say a big shout out to Andrea Wheatman, who was the outgoing president of N E F. She hosted her last meeting, board meeting last week. She really has just been awesome these last, I believe, four years. She did like a double term for the N E F. So really sad to see her go. We already mentioned the joint meeting, which is November 29th. I hope you all can make it. It'll be 6:30 here. And we should have a lot of great information around our finances in the city and how we move forward going into budget season. Lastly, before we get to Mr. Callahan, I'm going to say my Whittier update, and I know he has a Whittier update too. I didn't get to go to the meeting that, that Mr. Callahan went to the other night. We had a housing production plan meeting here at the senior center that I had to be at. But no, no new news, news on my front. I think the last time I met, I had told you, I continued to meet with the leaders of the other 10 cities and towns. I've also had conversations with Lieutenant Governor, who I think my next step with her will be maybe getting her on a call with the other 11, 10 cities and towns, and maybe even our state delegation to be involved as well. You know, since then, I've, I've written an op-ed with Mayor Gove of Amesbury. That was in the paper last week. There was another couple of articles that have been in the paper. We sent a letter to the MSBA just voicing our concerns with the process so far and, and, you know, really having no financial mechanism attached to this proposed vote on January 23rd. We did get a response from MSBA pretty quickly, and then they also instructed Whittier to respond to our, our letter as well. And I know a couple of the other communities have already sent similar letters, so, and I think a few more will continue to send letters to the MSBA. What else did I want to say? I think that's it. I know the state delegation had met with Whittier yesterday, I believe. Not yesterday, yesterday was Sunday last week. And I think theirs was more informational, but just looking at, at any kind of mechanisms at the state level, whether it be requesting more funds or looking at having the, the debt. at the state level, whether it be requesting more funds or looking at having the debt be excluded, you know, from your, from your account for each city and town. So they're looking at a few different avenues that the state can actually help with, which is why I do want to clue them in moving forward. But, you know, again, I'll continue to update everybody, but, you know, we are, I am trying to keep everyone in the loop as we move forward with this. Whittier did host, which, which, Mr. Callahan will get to, an information session last Thursday. It's the only one they had scheduled going forward, and they have no plans on going to any of the other cities and towns to talk about this project that would affect us here in a report for the next 30 years. So that's disappointing. I think that'll probably be part of the conversation. We have Lieutenant Governor when we have that, that conversation as well. But I guess I'll stop there, and I'll let, I'll let Mr. Callahan kind of fill, fill everyone in on how that meeting went. Is that what you're going to talk about?
Yeah, I know, no.
I've built it up at this point.
Let's talk about Pop-Tarts.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So I went on Thursday night. The presentation was lacking, I guess, in any detail. It was more about how great it would be if we could have this new building, more than how it's going to affect everybody. There were roughly 30, maybe 40 people there. I'd never actually been inside the building. A lot of the discussion was the facilities guy pointing out how hard it was to change the light bulbs, since the ceilings are 60 feet tall or whatever that is. The number is still extraordinary. And the superintendent kept stressing how it was equitable across all the towns because everybody was roughly getting a $264 a year tax increase, except for Georgetown's, which for some reason is double that. So as you may expect, I got up and did a comment to it, and I just, I asked the superintendent, like, you know, give me your elevator pitch on how I can sit in all of our budget meetings and then say that, yes, we can, you know, for 29 kids, we can have this gigantic 30-year bill. And mentioned how there's no mechanism already, and her response was, we'll help towns get debt exclusions done. And I was like, are you going to help do a, you know, market everybody to vote on another tax increase, you know? It was very disappointing. So I was there, a woman, and whose name escapes me, I'm sorry, Pam, something who just got re-elected to the Amesbury City Council was there, a selectman from Salisbury. They all kind of had similar things to say that I did. There was a gentleman in front of us who had a whole series of drawings and confronted them about, why didn't you try and do it this way? And MSBA rules are very specific, and he countered with, but if MSBA rules do say you can do the repair version of the project if you didn't do X to the rooms, why didn't you just design the rooms like this? There was very long back and forth between the Whittier people and that guy. I wish I knew who he was, but he seemed to know what he was talking about. One of the bills on there is the wastewater treatment plant, which I think the city of Haverhill should pay for because it's, it's infrastructure for the whole town, not just, you know. But the other interesting thing was the half-mile access road they want to build, or they're being required to build by code, regardless of the plan, the fixed plan or the new plan. I imagine the fire department's part of that. They want $11 million for a half-mile, two-lane blacktop. And Owen Smith, resident here who ran for council.
He's here tonight, by the way.
Hello. Thank you. He had the figures that a six-lane interstate highway is only $14 million for a whole mile. So where is the 11, what kind of, what kind of back road is this back road? So I don't know, I don't know a whole lot about a lot of the details, where they came from. They've been non-communucative, really. I went back and I found that the earliest school building committee they had was back in March of 2022. And quite honestly, I'm disappointed that our reps have never come to our meetings and brought it up. You know, we appoint them, right? So with that said, I sent everybody, using information from Mr. Smith, a resolution that we ask the school committee for Whittier to ask for an audit from the state. So the rule about that is, and this came from the language Mr. Smith wrote, who he sent to the auditor's office, their reply was, the legal way to do it is the only people who can ask are a series of city councils or town meetings, or the school committee themselves can ask for it, which seems crazy to me that the rule is, if you want an audit, you have to ask us to give you an audit instead of saying, you're going to get one. So I don't know if people are comfortable with waiving our rules and letting me read this and then we vote on it, or you want to wait and do it on the real agenda for our next meeting. But if that vote is going to be on January 23rd, I would prefer to get at least, you know, this is probably more symbolic than anything.
Do we have the date of their meeting?
Can I just say, so the biggest date coming up is December 13th. That's Whittier School Committee's next meeting.
That's when they're voting.
So I would say we probably, well, we do have another meeting before that, but, but we could, we could vote it on the next one and still get it to them before then, but that's the vote that they'll take to certify the vote that's going to take place in January. So that is technically not official yet, even though
Right.
everyone's thinking, thinking of it as pretty official, which I do think there is a little bit of momentum about pausing this whole process. I don't know how realistic that is, but I do think it's being talked about a lot more the last couple of weeks than it was originally.
Can you send that, I'm sorry?
I sent it to everybody at the beginning of this.
No, no, I was, can you, could you send that to our Whittier reps and ask them?
It went to them. It was sent, the original longer version of it was sent to them, yeah.
I just have a clarifying question. Brian, when you're talking about an audit, you're talking about an audit of not all of Whittier, an audit of the project.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps.
If you look in your email.
No, I
Yeah, I know, I didn't get to it until today, and it was too late. I mean, it's basically a small paragraph and then three wherethes, you know?
That's okay.
I can just pass this around. If the majority is not comfortable with waiving the rules and doing it tonight, we can wait till the 5th, but it's just, you know, it's two more weeks, and I don't know how long it would take a state audit to even start, you know, if it even would happen. But, you know, I would also like to, you know.
I'm not comfortable with that tonight.
Okay, so you want to wait till the 5th?
But I'm speaking just for myself.
Sure. I don't know if we can take a vote to ask about taking a vote, though. But general
I think if you don't have a vote scheduled, you're better off waiting.
Okay. Can you get that on the agenda?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. In the meantime, you guys have it. If you have any comments or anything, you can just let me know. Then that's all.
I just have one, one comment on that, is that how it was explained to me with renovation instead of the new building, the three major projects that they have that they would have to do to the current building is sprinkler system, which is like over $10 million, the wastewater treatment plant, which is over $10 million, and then the access road, which is over $10 million. All three of those would get them over to this $30 million threshold, which would cause the whole building to be completely upgraded and to code.
Right.
So, I mean, that's what they're pushing, right? Do I know for sure to those three things? So, I mean, I've been kind of pushing like, why don't we do two of those? I mean, a $20 million ask of these loving communities is still, I would argue, too high for Newburyport, but at least it's a more reasonable ask than a 464, you know, 444 million dollar building.
Yeah.
You know, you know, capital upgrades, you know, should be made on a regular basis, I would imagine, from a school like that. I don't think that's, that's what they've done the past 15 years.
Well, I mean, you know, we can't get our own roof fixed at the high school.
No, absolutely.
That's like six years in a row now, right, that they said no. So, yeah, but I mean, we can, we can wait till the 5th, as long as we can do it on the 5th for sure, so.
It's the 4th, but yeah.
Oh, 4th, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can you just say what, I guess I'm not 100% clear what the intention of the resolution would be, like, what would be the result of calling, what would be the result of getting an audit?
I don't trust the numbers. You know, there were a bunch of people there saying numbers that were like, no, it's, it would be more like this, you know, so, you know, it's, it's more of, I don't buy it, you know?
I would say the biggest
But if an interstate highway is easily findable to be of $14 million a mile, how is a two-lane back road $11 million for a half a mile? It doesn't make any sense, you know? Or, you know, did they get the architect to give them the Mercedes instead of the Honda Civic? You know, who knows? Because the school building committee has never, I guess they're legally public meetings and they've had them, but it's just unfortunate that really the communities who would go or have to pay the bill, we don't know anything.
Isn't this still an estimate, though? I mean, this, the, the details of the
Well, it's not going to go, yeah, right, but it would never get cheaper the longer they wait. And she, the superintendent explained that that, the repairs version, would actually extend it out like 10 years.
Right.
So I don't think that would all be in one go, that money ask either, unlike the fix, the replace the building. And then there was a whole thing where they needed, you know, they're going to build it on their pretty much brand-new turf football field.
Right.
Tear that out, build the building, and then build a new series of athletic things, which is going to cost piles of money too, so.
So, I'm sorry, I just am getting stuck on the details. So we passed this resolution, the result is we send this request. What is the outcome of that?
They either say, yes, we will tell the state auditor's office, we want an audit of our project to make sure it's all correct, or they say, no, sorry, we're not doing it. So, but I was hoping other communities would follow us.
Right, I was going to say, is it one school committee, us sending in the request, or will, will everybody be sending?
Well, if we did it, then I would immediately contact the other school committees and say, we did this.
This is what we're doing, yeah.
Yeah.
But it would just be a request for them to then call an audit on themselves.
Correct. They could still all say no, but I don't, I don't think that's a very good look, though. If you say, no, we're not going to ask to make sure our books are right or whatever, you know, whatever the, or the project numbers are, are right up, or the only options, you know, there may be other things. I mean, Brezner Hand in this building, I can't remember how many meetings there were, right? We all knew exactly what was going on the entire time, and I just don't see this as happening here, except for here's a bill for $30 million, so.
If the outcome of the audit is that the numbers are correct, what is, what does that?
Then I don't know.
And how long, and how long do we know how long an audit would take?
No, and there's a chance that the state may say, we can't do this, and they're going to push this project out years. I don't know. But, again, but the reason we don't know is because the stuff all of a sudden got thrown in everybody's lap, right? Instead of doing it correctly, and here's our first SBC meeting, the potential project cost is $444 million, you know?
Yeah. I think, I think they've, I mean, at least, I heard from some people who also attended the meeting, they seem to be conceding a little bit that they haven't gone about this the right way. I mean, I hope that's apparent. I am still very disappointed that these meetings in the communities aren't rescheduled, and then expecting everyone to vote on it. You know, that's something, it's an easy fix for them to do if, you know, you know, partly, when you, when you go through these projects and superintendent knows this, I mean, you have to go out there and sell it to the communities and to the people that, that have to foot the bill for it. And you might have to have people stand up and say they don't like what you're doing, and you've got to be able to do that. I think we all have faced that, you know? So, I don't know. That's where we are right now. I do have a meeting with our city solicitor tomorrow, and, you know, we're, we're looking at a lot of different options going forward, whether it's trying to stop the vote, whether it's the vote happens. I mean, I want to have options on, on every kind of scenario that we have moving forward. And like I said, just continue to work with the other 10 cities and towns, and hopefully, you know, have, have a united voice moving forward. I mean, some community, a lot of communities are now, you know, because we're a city, we're able to do things a little bit more quickly than, than some of the other towns that we work with, you know, whereas everything has to go through their select board. And so they're, they're starting to have those conversations.
Great, that could be another reason to, to wait, because maybe you'll have more information at our December 4th meeting, you know, wait on this.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think this is a good thing to do either way. But like I said, I'm happy to, you know, it's, it's, we have time, so we certainly can do that at the next meeting. Good.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Gens.
Just one more piece of new business, Superintendent. Just in light of the email we received last week, I'm just hoping that the, the district can reflect on why the position of the CPAC president has had so much turnover lately, and what the district might be able to do differently to support the next president and kind of get that, you know, organization off the ground a little bit more.
I have one other, just quick thing. I wanted to throw out a potential date for our winter retreat. I'm looking at Saturday, January 6th, roughly 10
I think I'm busy.
Yeah, okay, not you. 10 to 2 with a lunch break. In light of the fact that we have, we'll be onboarding new members, I'm thinking of bringing in a presenter, potentially Michelle McNulty, to go over role and responsibilities of the school committee, open meeting law, have some Q and A. So that's why I'm looking at dates early so that we could, we could book a speaker for that. I can send out an email as well so that people can be checking their calendars and letting me know about that. New members as well, I'll make sure that you're included in that, okay?
I was going to ask if the new members are, are getting our packets of our school committee packets.
I think that's a good idea. I did, did you, did you get the email that I sent you? Kathleen? Yes? You didn't? Okay, so I should check that I have your correct email. And then, and then Andy, you should be receiving it through the, the school committee newsletter, since you're a parent in the district? Yeah, yeah, so you'll, they'll just get it that way, because there's, there's a link to the meeting and agenda right at the top.
Terrific.
Okay, I'll follow up with you. Any other new business? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Just not fast enough with those seconds on the motions to adjourn.
I know, we'll make sure you get at least one